Yeah. It's all right. Call this Norwood City Council meeting to order. If everyone can please rise for a moment of reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Here.
Mrs. Hoover?
Here.
Ms. Royce?
Here.
Mrs. Bowling?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Gerton?
Here.
Mr. Brayden?
Here.
We have all members present this evening. Moving on to amendment of the agenda, we have several items. We are adding three communications from the Planning Commission. We are removing the ordinance that appears as ordinance M. 1. We have a replacement updated ordinance that was provided to us. On that same matter, that will appear as M. 4. And yes, Mrs. Franzen?
I move that we amend the agenda as stated?
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to amend the agenda as stated. Mrs. Bowling?
My second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. We have three sets of minutes, those from May 13th, May 27th, and June 10th. Mrs. Hoover?
I move we accept and file the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a second? Mr. Garden?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Garden. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, that is a special presentation. We have Mr. Wolf, the chief building official with the Norwood Building Department. And I can...
Let's see if I could get this to work.
I got it.
You got it? There we go.
There we go.
So, let's see. There we go. Okay. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk to the board about Building Department and how we operated last year and where we are going. In front of you, you should have my report, and it matches all the slides, so you can follow it on the screens or follow it on the paper. Next slide, please. Okay. The team in the Building Department is made up of Carrie Town, who's the administrator, and actually the person that knows more about anything in the Building Department. Mark Reeves is a building inspector. He's been there for over 20, almost 30 years. And he's lived in Norwood his entire life, and I think he knows everybody. Mike Robel, he's lived in Norwood. He's one of the housing inspectors, been there about 25 years. Justin Bogemanker, he is another, a new housing inspector, but he's been with the waterworks, so he's been basically with the city probably a good 10 years. And me, Ralph Wolf, I'm the chief building official. Thank you. Next slide. In the year 2024, the Building Department had building permits totaling 738, with the residential permits at 473 and commercial permits at 265. Total permit fees that we accepted were $535,823. But that's not what the city actually took in, because we had fees that had to go to our consultants, fees that go to the state, BZA, and that also included BZA filings and Planning Commission filings. I haven't come up with a total number, because I have to do a lot of subtractions and additions, and it was getting a little testy, so I couldn't totally figure it out, so I left it blank after that. Total investment dollars in the city of Norwood, there was $38,498,205 in 2004. Residential investments were $6,43,173, and the commercial investment dollars were $32,455,000. So as you see, a lot of people, a lot of money, have been invested in the city of Norwood fixing it up. Next slide, please. In the year 2025, for only five months, we have totaled 327 permits, residential permits 199, commercial permits 128. Let's go to 2025. We are about halfway with the year, and we have a little bit more than half of the total permits issued. Residential permits were 199, we're a little under halfway there. Commercial permits were 265. We are at 128 commercial permits. Total permit fees were $459,446. We're only a little less, a little over $100,000 from last year's amounts that we've taken in. That is due to our raise in our fees, our fee structure. Investment dollars, 2024, there was $38,498,000. So far to date, we have $38,510 invested already. Residential investments, we had a little over $6 million in '24. We're at $2,008 in investment dollars for residential. And commercial in 2024, there was $32,455,000. We are at $35,676. We are actually over what was invested last year. Next slide, please. In 2025, I set up some goals. We're trying, I'm trying to bring the Building Department into the 21st century. The Building Department is 90% paper, and that takes up a lot of space, and we have a big room upstairs, and that's almost full, even though we purge it every five years. So, we're trying to get everything electronic or as best we can. Right now, I'm starting slow, trying to get the big developers to give us stuff electronically, and I'll work back down into the small residential. We're going to start doing electronic document reviews, which we actually started already, where our consultants are looking at the drawings electronically and giving me their write-ups. And a better development of the permitting process. We have a process of how we do things. I'm trying to get that electronically as well, so people could fill out the forms online and submit them online and pay for it online. So this way, because we're getting a lot of people from out of the city, even out of the state, doing drawings, doing drawings, and, excuse me, there we go. And because of that, they're always asking, can I submit electronically? Can I pay electronically? Well, that's where we're going, so we don't have a choice. So we have to start going where all the other cities are working. Okay, next slide, please. Estimated for 2025 projects that are in the works, we have Factory 52 Phase 2 work going on. In front of you, there's Multicolor South that we're working through. Trail House on Wasson Way, that's being developed, and they're already digging and pouring and moving along. Ventura has a couple of developments going on, but he's on the back burner right now. Guesslight Properties is about to kick off with submittals. Volkswagen is in the process of submitting new drawings for the new Volkswagen dealership. And there's going to be a senior housing 55 and above on Montgomery Road, right where the hotel is, or was right here. Next slide, please. This is just a bar chart showing the permits that we've taken in in January, February, March, through the year. The red is showing what we've taken in this year. So you could see, we are almost equal or better than equal of halfway of what we took in last year. Go to the next one, please. The residential, here's the breakup of the residential permits. Residential is a little lagging behind, but we're taking in a lot, a lot of permits, permit applications, and I wouldn't be a bit surprised if it exceeds last year's. Next slide, the commercial permits. You can see in February, we've almost tripled what we've taken in, and that was because of Factory 52. Next slide. Total permit dollars, you could see, we've taken in in February, in March, in May, well exceeded what we've taken in '24. And like I said, that is because we, some of it's because we raised our prices, and because they're coming before the Planning Commission, and because they're going to the BZA, and they're doing all these, they're filing for that, and that's extra money as well. Next question, next slide. Total investments, constructed dollars in February, January and February, a lot of that was PLK, and some of it was Wasson Way, or the trails. And as you could see, we are almost equal to where we were in 2024. In 2025, already, we're only halfway done. Next slide. Total residential investment, constructed dollars. You could see, the residences, the residential people, they're spending more money in there that they didn't compare to last year, they're spending more money, because they're realizing that the, that the cost of the housing, housing market's gone up, and they want to, if they ever want to sell their house, they have to improve it. Next slide. The commercial dollars, as you could see, we're a little above where we were last year, and I think we're going to exceed over $400 million, $40 million in total investments. Next slide. Okay. Any questions? Yes?
Mrs. Franzen? Yeah, thank you so much for filling us in on this. It's really nice to see just how much money is being invested in Norwood. For people who are doing, pulling permits for their buildings, like small business owners or homeowners, is there anything, any advice that you can give them that are things that often go wrong, that maybe shouldn't go wrong as often?
Well, the biggest thing I would tell you is, depending on what you're doing in your house, bring in an architect or an engineer to do your drawings, so when we look at it, we don't question how it relates to the code, because they usually answer those questions on the drawings. Other than that, we have to write them letters telling them, okay, you didn't pass, and here are the things where you failed, you have to revise them. You know, and it's trouble, because the client or the homeowner wants to come in, they want to get the permit, they want to do the work, and they can't. So if they get it drawn up correctly and answered, we deal with them a lot better that way. And, but we work with them most of the time. We, Carrie is great, she explains everything to them, and if she can't explain them, I try to explain it to them, and I even draw them pictures, so they understand why and what it means.
Mr. Brayden?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Wolf, thank you for this today, it's very helpful. A couple of things, if you do go all digital, like you say you want to, what's Ms. Towne going to do?
Carrie will be in seventh heaven.
I'm joking.
No, I know, I know, Carrie will be in seventh heaven. It's a learning curve, because I have to train her at a doing. I'll have to train Mark, and I'm going to have to train our housing inspectors, because I want to be able for them to do it on an iPad, as opposed to writing it.
I appreciate that, that was just joking.
No, I know, but I'm just, honestly.
Yeah, that's perfect, I love it. So, when you say total investment dollars on the paper here, residential and commercial, can you explain a little bit how you get to that number? Is that, is that total, like, when someone comes to you and applies for a permit, they have a total number of what that job's going to cost for them? Is that where you're getting this number?
Yes, that is.
You've got all your permits, and you're telling all those numbers, and this is what number we have?
That's, we do not put numbers on anything. You, as, let's say you're the client, you're coming in with a set of drawings, on the permit it asks how much, what's the value of the construction cost? That's what your permit's based off of? That's what you pay. And we use that to develop these numbers. In some cases, you know, there was only once I told the guy he has to put in a real number, because...
Right, I get that, I understand. That was my next comment, like, these numbers are probably way higher.
They're probably, they're still probably low, but, but that doesn't include, you know, there's field changes, there's Arizona mission changes, there's just all of that engineering changes that really don't go into this number.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. I was just kidding about this.
No, 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 no. I guarantee she'll be happy when she does it, do all the work that she's doing now, or make it easier on her.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, two questions. One would be, so, building on Mr. Brayden's point, really, this is missing a lot of the dollars that, let's say, the typical homeowner might be putting in sort of non-permitted investment to improve their properties. So in theory, this is, you know, not only potentially understanding it, but it's also kind of missing a vast swath of, let's say, DIY kinds of smaller projects that people are pouring back.
Most of the people in the city of Norwood are very familiar that we have a building permit application, and they have to come in for building permits, whether it's a roof, whether it's redoing their driveway, et cetera. And our people walk or go around the city, we have our building inspector that goes around, we have our maintenance people that go around, and they tell us if something's been built without a permit, something that's not built, then we look and see if it's built without a permit, then we notify them. And if they don't come in for a permit, we fine them. You know, I don't mind working with them, but I don't like people pulling a wool over our eyes, in a way. I mean, we are a city. I mean, we have to work with people, but we still need to get what has to be done.
Thank you. And then, sorry, just, may I follow up? Is there any way, like, when I look at this number, I think $38 million, and there's maybe different ways that you could, let's say, like, scale that or make a ratio out of that to try to say, oh, there's more investment in Norwood relative to, say, the city's operating budget than in other communities? Is there any kind of, like, database that allows you to kind of compare?
That's going to be real hard to do. You know, that is just really hard. I don't know how to do it compared to other cities, because they may break their numbers down totally different than we're doing it. I could break them down, if the committee or someone in the committee wants to let me know what they would like to see, like, next year, I'm going to try breaking down the commercial permit fees and the residential permit fees, taking out all the extemporaneous stuff, so you could have it, and maybe even have numbers for the, for how much money we took in for the BZA, for the Planning Commission, for, and so on. So you could have a better understanding of that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Garden?
So, what do you see are the biggest obstacles to getting people to move into our storefronts that we've got so many of?
That is a tough, tough question. The biggest obstacle? It's not an obstacle. It's really you guys telling us where there are a lot of vacancies, and we have Mike Skelly, we could ask him to get to real estate agents and list out these projects, you know, we have it here, we could write up a little program for them and so on. So it's not really an obstacle, it's more of an opportunity. But we don't know all the people that are, all the open spaces. So if you, if you, the commission could tell us, you know, we'll be glad to do something and help any other department around.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoover?
Thank you. And I think kind of piggybacking on that, although it's not exactly the question I was going to ask, my question was about issues of our housing stock, and how much is vacant, how much needs some support? And also, I'm curious, and I know, it's my understanding that we do not keep track at this time of our vacant properties.
No, we do not.
How big of an issue, from the Building Department's standpoint, do you see the vacant properties?
To do that, the biggest, we would have to hire people, another person at least, to do that, to go around looking for vacant properties. Because then I would also want to tag onto that rental property.
How, do you have any sense of if there's an issue with vacant properties in the community?
Oh, there's, in every community, there's always an issue with vacancies. But that's not in the building's purview. Right now, it may be down the road, but right now, I have a lot more on my plate than I could handle, and those are things that if you people could help, I mean, you're in your districts walking around, if you know of vacant properties, we'll list them somewhere and have records of them, but that's going to be hard for us to do without having a separate person do that.
So, question, if I found someone who wanted to walk around Norwood and find empty properties, you'd be happy to accept that list?
I'm willing to look at it, but as everybody here knows, that we are in semi-receivership, and we need the state's approval to do that, so...
To do what?
To hire, to hire somebody.
No, 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 I said if I were to walk around.
Oh, if you, I would accept.
I paid a permanent salary.
I mean, we would look at it and make the records of it, and maybe in a year or two, we'll have a good list of vacant properties. And then we could see, go around, and my maintenance, my maintenance inspectors will go around and see if they are, the buildings are disheveled, and that they need to be fixed up, even though they do walk around, but if it's vacant, we could then go after the owner itself. And a lot of, and some of them that we know of that are vacant, their owners are in California, they're in Florida, and that's the harder part of it, because, yes, the house is disheveled, but, and they have to fix a bunch of things, but they're not going to come up, even though they're being fined.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wolf? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And if you come up with any questions, feel free to call my office, and we can set up a time to sit down and go through.
All right. Next on the agenda are requests to address council. We have three. The first is Charlene Myers.
Bringing a team. So I would like to introduce, you guys know me, I'm Charlene Myers, I'm from Focus Cincinnati. But this is also Pastor Peterson Mingo and First Lady Regina Mingo, and they have helped me run the warming shelter when we had it in the months of January and February. And so now, what we're about to do, and we'll give you a little flyer, is to start the cooling shelter. And you're probably asking, well, why isn't it open right now? There's a really key reason, and of course, it's not something far away from what is a problem in the city of Norwood, I'm sure. It's funding. We are only funded for, and this is out of Focus Cincinnati's budget, we're only funded for 15 days. And so, we thought, and this is our brain trust, not saying that it's the right brain trust, that if we open now, we're going to exhaust all of our days. The other thing that we realized with the warming shelter is, when we had the warming shelter, we were open and then we closed, because the temperature went down, and then it went up, and then it went down, typical Cincinnati, as Mark Twain said, if you don't like the weather, wait a minute. And that was exactly what happened. And what we were advised to do by Kevin Finn, who is a Norwood resident who runs the shelters in Cincinnati, is just pick a date, open, and stay open, because you'll lose momentum. We lost people, you know, knowing, like, we had people that came and told us, we didn't even know you were open, you know? And so, we decided that we're going to open late July, kind of hit that time, and then kind of stay open. So what do the numbers look like for the warming shelter? We had 205 guests that came to the warming shelter during the course of the 15 days that we were open, which is a pretty good number, you know, of people. I mean, as you know, with the warming shelter, we did not, you know, one of the guests that frequented Ashland Food Pantry unfortunately had died in the city of Norwood, which was quite tragic, and didn't hit our warming shelter again because of our momentum and all the things. So I'm going to turn it over to Pastor Mingo for a minute to say a few words, if that's okay, and he could talk about what this does in his church.
Thank you. To all members of the council, good evening. We have decided that we are not going to be going here, there, everywhere. We moved into Norwood, and we're at home. And when you're at home, you do the best that you can for home. We want to be a great part of this community, and we want people to know we do care. The Bible tells us, if we do unto others, that we would have them do unto us. And so, we have enough love to go around, that's for sure. We're not trying to take any members from another church. I found out a long time ago, there's enough sinners to go around. And so, we plan on being a great part of this community. And so we plan on being a great part of this community. I come from a family of 26 kids. We were always in need, always in want. We never had a fan or an air conditioner. We made it through the, on the rough side. And so I know there are other people out there, families similar to ours, who just don't have it. Misfortune somehow came upon them and they just don't have it. And they need help, and it's not always financial help, sometimes it's a kind word. Sometimes it's someone that basically can relate to you and know what you're going through. And so if we come into Norwood, we believe that we can present something that's needed everywhere, and that's more love, more love, more love, more love.
Thank you. The only thing I would end with is, you guys know that we're doing the meals at Christ the Savior, and so far this year, we've served 300 guests. That's not just meals, because at each meal, they're able to take a meal home. And so that's, it's almost double in terms of the amount of meals. And that work is just growing and growing, and the need is, of course, growing and growing. It's not going away. So I encourage you, as I always do, to come out to our meals and also visit the cooling shelter when we open. And if somebody asks you why we're not open, the unfortunate reason is because of money, which I hate to say that that's the reason, but it is. But thank you very much for, and I used all of my minutes this time. I normally don't.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. And have, thank you for allowing us to address council.
Thank you. The next request to address council is Joe Kaufman.
My name's Joe Kaufman. I'm addressing council with regards to the Norwood Planning Commission meeting that happened on Thursday, June 19th, where there was a discussion with PLK to propose the 48-unit townhome development at the corner of Robertson Avenue and Beach Street. And I live on Burrwood Avenue, which is nowhere near Factory 52, but listening into the conversation, I got curious while I was at work and looked at Google Maps. And when PLK announced that they were planning on building 48 townhomes in this plot of land, I got naturally curious. On page three of the handout here, I've got kind of a overview of the study area. Parcel number, region number five is where the 48-unit development is. And I started looking at the surrounding areas to understand how dense the city area is and what type of impact that might have for the local residents. Again, I don't live over here, it's just something that I was curious about and thought I'd share some of those results with you tonight. So I broke out into five parcels and looked at the existing conditions based on the number of front doors in a city block divided by the acreage. So that gives you kind of a density of how many families or how many units. Norwood's a little unique in the sense that if you see a house, it could have two families living in it, in a duplex, or sometimes there's quadplexes on corners in this area. So that was a way to try to normalize how many people are living in a specific region. So on page four, I have the results of some of this. And on figure two, I've broken out the region by, region one, two, three, four, and five, and the existing condition with the number of front doors, acreage, and then the density of the front doors to acre. So region number five is the study area again, and the existing density is about 4.8 front doors per acre. On figure three, I've gone ahead and added PLK's proposal of the 48 townhomes into region number five. And so that number now turns into 10.62, which is about a 220% increase of population density based on this development. Then I got curious and like, well, I live over kind of a few blocks away. I wonder what the average density of Norwood is. And I couldn't do the entire analysis. So I've decided to pick the block over on Floral Avenue, which I believe Mayor Schneider resides there. And his block is performing the same analysis. He's got 57 front doors on his parcel spaced over 8.68 acres for a density of 6.6. So 6.6 acres, and comparing that to the existing density in region five of 4.81, that is a little bit more dense, but it is certainly not as dense as the 6.6. So he's not here tonight, but in order to reach the proposed density of what PLK is trying to do there in region number five, he would need to add 35 front doors to his 8.68 acres in order to achieve a similar density. So if you could imagine, well, using region number five as an example, a 220% increase, you open your back door, what was your backyard is now somebody's. I don't know, there could be a family living there, there could be something. So what I'm trying to describe here is by adding 48 front doors to an existing city block of 38 front doors, that's twice the amount of car doors, that's twice the amount of conversations, that's twice the amount of people residing in an area that was, well, right now is green space. So when residents come up, and as they did during the Norwood Planning Commission meeting last Thursday, and say, hey, I'm concerned about this property that I call home, and that being a substantial change to my well-being, this is kind of a short analysis of where maybe some of those concerns are coming from, from a residential standpoint. Page five and page six are just some additional considerations. In summary, what, in order to match the density in the neighborhood surrounding region number five, based on this type of an analysis, PLK could add about 24 front doors to the region five and still match about the average density in that neighborhood, which, again, is about twice as many as what they're, or half as many as they're proposing. So I guess just keep that in mind. It sounds like the Planning Commission has approved a preliminary plan for this development. Ultimately, my understanding is that it comes to city council for approval. So just keep that in mind moving forward as planes come across the desk. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last request to address council is Virginia Patterson.
Good evening, council members. Whenever you see my face, it is usually good news. So I just wanted to recap. A couple weeks ago, we did celebrate our fourth year for Juneteenth in the city of Norwood, which was a great success. I just wanted to thank Sidney Hawkins from Channel 12. On Friday, June 13th, from 5:30 until 7:30, she went live with us at New Vision Missionary Baptist Church promoting Juneteenth. It was an exhausting couple of hours, but it was well worth it and a lot of fun. And I hope she continues to work with us on the Juneteenth events and promoting them. And then on Saturday, June 14th, we, the new home of Juneteenth is at New Vision Missionary Baptist Church. I'd like to thank Bishop Stanton Thomas and First Lady for welcoming Juneteenth into their church. We had a flag presentation and we also had, well, New Vision also has a soul food cafe at their church. So what we did was we incorporated that into Juneteenth and made it an event, and it was great, the food was great. And I did want to thank you, I did want to thank people, the members of the church as well. Like I said, once again, Bishop Stanton Thomas and First Lady, Diane Gatewood, who I met, who I met at the Gem of the Highlands Award, and she approached me wanting to collaborate on Juneteenth, and she made that happen. I'd also like to thank our guest of honor, which is Miriam B. Almond Greenlee, E4 Army, retired veteran. We always honor our veterans on Juneteenth because they play a big part in the Juneteenth history. We also had a keynote speaker, which was Minister Cynthia Caldwell. We also had our young, our young adults and some of the youth from the community. They sang songs and they also recited poems. And I'd like to thank Ciara Cox, Jasmine Ashry, Elasia Smith, Patrick Patterson, the front door hostesses, and the hospitality cooks. And I'd also like to thank Councilwoman Susan Hoover for your continued support and making sure that the proclamation is updated every year, because I wasn't sure if we had it every year, every so many years. So thank you once again for your continued support. And I'd like to encourage our citizens in the city of Norwood to continue supporting Juneteenth, to continue showing up. And it's a moment in time for us to come together as a community and just get to know each other. I met a lot of new people, and I was very grateful for Councilmember Gerton, who showed up with his family to listen to the presentation and celebrate with us. And the Riricas also showed up, which I was very appreciative of. So it was nice to see some, some familiar faces, but it was also great to see some new ones. So thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to third readings of ordinances and resolutions. We have one this evening. That is the ordinance amending Norwood Codified Ordinance, Section 1759.07, nuisances to revise the types of weeds determined to be a nuisance. Mrs. Franzen.
I make a motion that we have the third reading.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to have the third reading. Mrs. Bowling.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Call the floor, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the third reading of the ordinance.
Ordinance amending Norwood Codified Ordinance, Section 1759.07, nuisances to revise the type of weeds determined to be a nuisance.
Mrs. Franzen.
I make a motion that we pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to pass the ordinance. Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Mrs. Franzen.
Just since it's been a second, I just wanted to remind people slash let people know what this, exactly this change is. Currently, in the current language of the ordinance, there are some native plants that are explicitly called out as not being allowed to be grown in Norwood. And what this ordinance does is simply remove those native plants from the list and makes it so if you have a garden that is clearly maintained, that your neighbor can't report you for having weeds that are too high. So other, other than that, everything is the same. So, which is good, because I was growing some things on the list illegally.
Any other discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Franzen, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to pass the ordinance. Call the floor, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to second readings of ordinances and resolutions. The first is a resolution to approve the final Hamilton County 911 plan pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 128, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Gerton.
I make a motion that we have the second and third readings of the ordinance.
Motion to suspend the rules and have the second and third readings.
I make a motion to suspend the rules and have the second and third readings, sir.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Gerton to suspend the rules and have the second and third readings of the ordinance, sorry, of the resolution. Sarah Second. Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the floor, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the second and third readings of the resolution.
A resolution to approve the final Hamilton County 911 plan pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 128, and declaring an emergency. A resolution to approve the final Hamilton County 911 plan pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 128, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling.
I move that we pass the resolution.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to pass the resolution. Ms. Royce.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Any discussion? Call the floor, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item. This is a resolution declaring June 2025 to be Pride Month in the city of Norwood. Mrs. Bowling.
I move that we suspend the rules and have the second and third reading of the resolution.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to suspend the rules and have the second and third readings of the resolution. Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Mrs. Bowling.
Thank you. Mr. President, if you will allow it, I would like to thank all of our friends and community members for their immense patience. Thank you very kindly. After our last meeting, we had some feedback from the community about our Pride resolution despite this being our fourth year, fourth, fifth? Fourth or fifth year of having the resolution on the books. This was a surprising piece of feedback for me. And so I did invite some community members to come and show their support and to let folks know that if you are a person who's watching this at home, there are a lot of people who stand behind you and who have your back and support you. I did write my thoughts down after last meeting, and I'm going to sort of read it so that I don't forget anything. It is 2025. To oppose a Pride Month resolution in this day and age is not only disappointing, it is deeply out of touch with the values of inclusion, dignity, and basic human respect that any healthy community should uphold. Norwood, like many cities in America, has a past shaped by discrimination, but we are not doomed to repeat it. We have the power and the responsibility to write a better story. A Pride Month resolution is not about politics, it is about people. It is about recognizing the LGBTQ+ neighbors, coworkers, family members, and friends who have always been a part of this community, even when it wasn't always safe to be visible. I'm proud to be the first openly gay person elected to public office in Norwood, but I will be even prouder when I am not the last. That only happens when our institutions affirm that LGBTQ+ people belong here, fully, freely, and without fear. Cities and towns our size need pride just as much as, if not more than, big cities. For the young person growing up here unsure if they're safe to be who they are, for the elder who's lived a life in silence, for every LGBTQ+ resident who has been made to feel invisible or unwelcome, this resolution says you are seen, you are valued, you are a part of Norwood's future. To oppose that message is not a defense of tradition, it is a denial of progress, and it is a betrayal of the very idea of community. Pride is not a threat to anyone, it is a celebration of life, resilience, and truth. History will remember who stood for the rights of people who did not live like them, love like them, or look like them. And Norwood deserves to be on the right side of that history. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen.
I just, I don't have much to add to that, I feel like that says it all, but I did want to say thanks again to Mr. Eric Thompson, who was the first person who introduced this resolution four or five years ago. He unfortunately was not able to be here, but his wife is here, and I'm glad to see her and so many other people here that are part of our beautiful, amazing community.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoover.
I have a few words, and I'm going to try to get through it without tears. Pride didn't begin as a protest. The Stonewall uprising was a stand against oppression, and it was a demand to be treated with humanity and equality. And that's the spirit that endures today. When we celebrate pride, we're making a statement that our communities are strongest when they are inclusive, when everyone is free to show up as their full selves without fear or shame. And it's absolutely, pride is not just for LGBTQ+ people. I'm not a member of that community, but I love people in that community. I have family members, I have friends, I have neighbors, I have community members. It's for all of us. It's a reflection on our shared values that dignity is not conditional, that love is not a liability, and that a just society is one in which everyone is welcome. To celebrate pride is to recommit to building a world where no one is forced to hide who they are. It's an act of resistance and an act of joy, and above all, an act of hope. I also just want to say I'm one of the oldest people here, I might be the oldest one up here, and I remember in high school... here, and I remember in high school, I knew one gay kid, and he was not out. He was actually the first boy I ever kissed. Sorry, Jay. And my children are now all high school graduates. They knew gay kids. They know gay kids. They know trans kids. They love trans kids. They are members of our community, they are here, they've always been here, they will always be here. It is our job to make sure that our community is safe, and I'm one who will continue to commit to that as my role on council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, motion on the floor by Mrs. Bowling, seconded by Mrs. Hoover, is to suspend the rules and have the second and third readings of the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have the second and third readings of the resolution.
Resolution declaring June 2025 to be Pride Month in the city of Norwood. Resolution declaring June 2025 to be Pride Month in the city of Norwood.
Thank you. Ms. Royce.
I move that we pass the resolution.
Motion by Ms. Royce to pass the resolution. Mrs. Bowling.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Ms. Royce.
I'm very excited to vote yes on this resolution, again, just for the record.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to introductory readings of ordinances and resolutions. The first is a resolution designating June 19th, 2025, as Juneteenth Independence Day in the city of Norwood. Mrs. Hoover.
I would like to suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution. Mrs. Franzen.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Mrs. Franzen.
I know she was just up here, but thank you again to Virginia Patterson and all the folks at the churches, all the cookouts that happened on Juneteenth. I am sad that I was not able to be in town, I had a family thing, but I really appreciate Virginia's role in getting this recognized, as well as everyone else in this community who's continued to celebrate it.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoover.
I've got another little statement. Juneteenth matters, and not just as a historical marker. And I think what's important about Juneteenth is we're not celebrating the 13th Amendment, which abolished slavery. We're not. We're celebrating the moment when the last enslaved people found out that two years ago their lives had been freed. So, what is the lesson there? Why is that what we're celebrating? So, for me, it's an important reminder that in America, justice has too often been uneven. It's been delayed, it's been denied, which is interesting, we're talking about this right after Pride, if we're noticing a theme here. And Juneteenth gives us a space to reflect not just on the promises of freedom, but on the gap between that proclamation and the practice. It's not the date when slavery ended, but when the moment the freedom reached those who had been purposely left behind. Clear, purposefully left behind. Celebrating Juneteenth honors the truth that emancipation wasn't a singular act, it was a process, a struggle and a fight. And in many ways, that struggle continues. So, in our work today to dismantle systemic racism, expand civil rights, and ensure opportunity for all, it's rooted in the same pursuit that Juneteenth represents, the work of forming that more perfect union. So, I have a t-shirt that says it, I didn't wear it today because I'm wearing purple, but Juneteenth is not just black history, it is American history. So, this is for all Americans to celebrate. It's when we recommit ourselves to the unfinished work of justice, which is not simply an ideal, but it's a practice that we have to pursue every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, motion on the floor by Mrs. Hoover, seconded by Mrs. Franzen, is to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the resolution.
Resolution designating June 19th, 2025, as Juneteenth Independence Day in the city of Norwood. Resolution designating June 19th, 2025, as Juneteenth Independence Day in the city of Norwood. Resolution designating June 19th, 2025, as Juneteenth Independence Day in the city of Norwood.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen.
I move that we pass the resolution.
Motion by Mrs. Franzen to pass the resolution. Mrs. Bowling.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Bowling. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item. This is a resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate from the Streets Fund 1001-0852-57200 to pay the outstanding invoice for services already rendered by Capital Electric and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Bowling.
I move that we suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution. Mrs. Hoover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoover. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the resolution.
Resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate from the Street Funds 1001-0852-57200 to pay the outstanding invoice for services already rendered by Capital Electric and declaring an emergency. Resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate from the Street Funds 1001-0852-57200 to pay the outstanding invoice for services already rendered by Capital Electric and declaring an emergency. Resolution authorizing the city auditor to approve a then and now certificate from the Street Funds 1001-0852-57200 to pay the outstanding invoice for services already rendered by Capital Electric and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowling.
I move that we pass the resolution.
Motion by Mrs. Bowling to pass the resolution. Mr. Moore.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Next item is an ordinance authorizing a promotional offer of employment for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Public Works and declaring an emergency. Mr. Gerton.
I make a motion to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the resolution. Ordnance.
Motion by Mr. Gerton to suspend the rules and have all three readings of the ordinance. Mrs. Franzen.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Please have all three readings of the ordinance.
Ordinance authorizing a promotional offer of employment for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Public Works and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing a promotional offer of employment for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Public Works and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing a promotional offer of employment for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Public Works and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to pass the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Brayden to pass the ordinance. Mrs. Franzen.
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover.
I was wondering if Mr. Powers could come up or perhaps HR and tell just a little bit about this new position.
Thank you. I'm Nancy Mace.
Make your work your time. Yeah, this is the new position that you all approved previously for our Assistant Superintendent. The position is to support public works, of course, that their capacity is not large or deep in the bench, so Clint needs some help. So, that is this position. We did a civil service interviews for this position. We had three excellent candidates, and one just came out on top, which is Mr. Strange. The reason we had to bring this forward to you is based on our personnel policies, we could only make an offer over a certain amount of money, but based on his previous year with overtimes and things like that, he was actually going to be equal and more responsible. So, we decided to bring this and give him a fair salary for the responsibility that we're asking him to perform. Yes.
Mrs. Franzen.
Thank you. I'm very, very, very much in favor of this. I know Mr. Zimmerman needs this position desperately, and I'm glad that you were able to find a good person for it. And I think this is a really fair salary, almost lower than I might have expected, actually, not to imply anything, but yeah, thank you very much for getting it done, and I hope that Clint has good success.
Yeah, we're ready.
Mrs. Hoover.
Thank you. I'm assuming then that that position will be filled, that one that Mr. Strange is leaving. Yes, and it is a union position, so it will be posted as this is put tonight, tomorrow, for within the union first. If we get enough candidates, then we go within promotional. If we do not, then we would post without, more than likely someone's going to bid into this for promotion, and we will just kind of roll up until we then bid out probably for a laborer. All right, thank you, appreciate that.
Further questions or discussion? Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Onbeck. So, just more of a procedural question, you know, I'm supportive of what's happening here. I know back in February, there was, let's call it a salary schedule passed that had kind of a min and a max for different positions, and this one was on there. And I know the number that's included in here kind of falls in between that min and the max. So, is it procedurally just more of a function of sort of the step change from like where he is now to this new number that is the, let's say, sticking point?
Yeah, so our personnel policy manual says that we can't offer 5% over the min of our salary ordinance, which is what you're referring to.
Got it.
This is slightly over that, you know, based on what he made. We did an analysis of what he did, made the past three years and then last year, and the salary was the percentage we felt was fair for the position. He's been with us a long time, so that mid-salary for this position is fair, and he has some growth then.
Got it, thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? All right, thank you. Motion on the floor by Mr. Brayden, seconded by Mrs. Franzen, is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover.
Yes.
Ms. Royce.
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gerton.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to administration reports. Mr. Baumzow.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So, we are continually looking for candidates for tax clerks in the city of Norwood, so I'll probably keep coming to you as that. The good thing is we've been working with the city's HR department, Lori, to find creative ways, we're working with the union, just find creative ways to kind of do things to help us to attract candidates. So, we're hopeful for the future, but definitely we've got three open positions that we would love to fill them. So, if you know anybody, send them our way. I wish I could say we have a hiring bonus. Like, if you refer somebody, I'll give you $100. It's that needed, so be happy to do that. But anyway, thank you all for listening. Thank you.
Mr. Moore.
Mr. Baumzow, just for my own notification and anyone listening who might think, oh, that sounds like somebody I know, can you describe, let's say, base level type of criteria or characteristics of the kind of person you're looking for that we might more readily identify them and point them your way?
That'd be great, yeah, thank you for the question. So, the absolute minimum qualification is, you know, having a high school diploma. We're looking kind of just for a little bit more of a mix of like maybe a business, somebody who has some experience in like accounts receivable, accounts payable, maybe a recent college graduate that has like maybe an associate's in business degree or an accounting degree that wants some experience kind of doing that. Or basically somebody that if they know Excel, Excel, that's amazing. If they can just kind of follow processes, like it's just a very process kind of thing where you're doing somewhat repetitive tasks, but you're having to interpret things that come in and kind of like determine, you know, which way to go when you're reading those. So, I hope that helps kind of a little bit. Yeah. Yeah. Starting pay right now is $21 an hour, and we can, there is some flexibility there if they have some direct experience, because we have to kind of go to the union to get a little bit of flexibility there. But hopefully, you know, maybe there'd be, the starting pay could be higher at some point in the future, which is my hope. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Bonzal? All right. Mrs. Jaeger, were you going to provide a report for the auditor's office?
Yes. Sorry, Ken had a family emergency, and so I just need to step in. So the main thing I wanted to talk about was the tax budget. We had hoped to get it on the council agenda today, but did not because we did not get the public hearing notice out in time. So in lieu of that, I kind of just wanted to explain for your benefit and the public so what, because we'll have to have all three readings in July, just so that you're aware of it. So a couple of updates. I know Emily and Jeff have been in for a little bit. Kimina for one day, which is a first, I think, for getting this tax budget done. So we involve Finance Committee, and they've gotten to, all of the Finance Committee members have gotten to see various drafts and had the opportunities to ask questions, as well as a member of the FRP Commission. So again, trying to get all interested parties in the budget involved from the beginning. And so just to explain a couple of things, the Schedule B, when you get it, is basically, or Schedule B, sorry, Exhibit 1, it's going to match the FRP. So there really wasn't, and I confirmed that with Anna Mary, there's no changes to that. I had to make that exhibit match the FRP exactly. So everyone's seen the FRP, so there are no changes there. And then probably the biggest one that people might have questions on is Exhibit 3, which are all the special revenue funds, debt service funds, capital project funds, enterprise funds. And so what I did with that is I sought input from the Safety Service Director, Public Works, Police Department, Health Department. This, again, another first, I think, is where we invited other departments to help create the budget that they're going to have to follow. So I think it was positive all the way around. So we got some good, I think we got some good numbers. I had to, there are a number of funds that have been dormant for a while. Number of them have zero balances, so I just left them zero as long as I saw that there was no activity, I just left them zero. And then we also have a number of dormant funds that have balances in them. Most of them are small. For that, I just put the current cash balance on it. And then what I think is as we develop, as we continue to develop the 2026 budget, we'll see if maybe, once we find the source of those funds and how those funds can be spent, rather than having them sit for five, six, seven years unused, if there's something that maybe somehow we can use them, you know, to a better purpose. But right now, I just kind of let the cash balance as is. The other big, I would say, not big for the tax budget, but bigger for the financials, at least through consulting with many different people, is it looks like a couple of the funds were miscategorized under the wrong fund type. And so those on, and I consulted the county, and they, you know, because I consulted with Auditor of State and other people, and I've got the backup to support it. Actually, it's our city's ordinance that provides the most support. The ordinance specifically says it's supposed to be a debt retirement fund. So we're gonna, I'm going to shift those funds, the tip funds, into the debt service. That way, all of the tip funds are going to be under debt service. It does not affect the tax budget. It's just, on the tax budget, it's just placement. What it does affect are the financials, because the financials feed into the different columns. So most likely, there'll need to be a restatement of 2023 financials when we do the 2024 financials, because there's a comparison. I think those are the major things, and then the last page is just including, listing the debt that we have. But again, I'm, if anybody has, we're going to try to get this posted maybe by the end of the week on our website, so that way the public can view it, and if anybody has any questions about it. Again, I've only been here since the end of February, so a lot of it's my best guess at this point. And also to remember, this is just the first stage. A lot's going to happen between now and December, so these numbers are really truly just the best estimate with five months of activity.
Thank you. Mr. Gertner.
I just want to add, on top of what Mrs. Jaeger said, this has been a very transparent process. The auditor's office has invited the Finance Committee to be part of the process. It's not something that we asked for. They, I mean, it's something I think needs to happen in the future, but it's been a great process. I feel very comfortable asking for three readings at once this comes to us next, because of how much they've put this before all of us to make sure that we've had a chance to review it and review it and review it. So thank you, Mrs. Jaeger.
Thank you. Mrs. Fransen.
Yeah, I'll echo what Mr. Gertner said. You know, it would be great to have it tonight, but I don't see any issue with passing it with all three readings in two weeks. I understand it so much better than I did last year or the year before, and I really appreciate it just being a part of the process and seeing how it all works, because, I mean, it's kind of only one of the most important documents the city has, so.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
Yeah, and I think, thank you, Ms. Jaeger and Mr. Miracle for the work on it. I think just, like as a, I don't know, a matter to point out, I think with the sort of, oh, it needs to be 10 days, there needs to be a public hearing, and all these kinds of things, I think that conveys a seriousness, which I think is awarded, but I also want to just kind of parse out that this is kind of an, like an opening offer in a way, and not, you know, we're not locking in the 26 budget in this, but it's more of a procedural matter than a, you know, a blood oath to these numbers. And so just want to kind of set that context for anybody that might go out to the auditor's say and look at it and whatnot, that it's still going to evolve. So thank you all for your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Ms. Jaeger, you may not know this off the top of your head, but a couple of years ago, you may not have the answer, I'm just curious if you do. A few years ago, Jim Stitt set us up a retirement healthcare fund. Do you know much about that? Do you know any information on that at all?
Mrs. Jaeger.
I'm not sure. It's one of the special revenue ones. I researched, I mean, I looked at the numbers, but I didn't really get to know what the fund was, only because of the timeframe. I had to like focus on looking at the financial activity, and then, once it's passed and once we, you know, as we get further into the budget process, then it's like figuring out. And I've actually reached out to all the departments, saying basically, who owns these funds? So that when we do get good, better numbers, then we'll go through each one of those. But surface level, because there's like so many different special revenue funds, I didn't really get to dive into what each one was. And actually, what I did, and I tried to do on the tax budget, is there were a lot of initials on there, and so I spelled them out, too. I was trying to help people, because there's a lot of coded funds, which I figured the public wouldn't know what that was, and I didn't know what it was, and so I tried to get those spelled out for people.
I appreciate that, Ms. Jaeger. Thanks. I didn't mean, I was just curious if you, if you off the top of your head, it's all right, it's not a big deal. I don't really expect you to have all those figures, but I didn't know if you were familiar with that. Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mrs. Jaeger? All right. Mr. Moore.
All right, just to address Mr. Braden's question, I don't think what he's referring to is a special revenue fund. I think it's a line item. It's a key that was added, and it was, at one point, we had CNIo Trust in retiree healthcare, and that program was changed. And so that maybe what you're talking about, I don't remember. It was six, seven years ago that we made those changes. I don't remember what the changes were, but I think there's probably still a line item in the budget somewhere, but it would not be a special revenue. Just.
Thank you. Thank you.
As far as a lot of our.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Moore? All right, then we will move on to unfinished business. It's already there, remember I fixed it.
I'm going to space it out this time.
Any unfinished business? Mrs. Hoover.
I might have a thing or two. I missed you all last council. Sorry about that. I won't let that happen again. What's our first, ah, would you like to do this one, sir?
Community survey. It is still up and running. Didn't we, I think we break 800 yet? We're pretty close.
We're at 802.
All right, so we are continuing to accept surveys. I think we did have a little bump with the schools sending information out. I think we may have peaked at like 50 or 60 that first day, I believe. But yeah, signs are still, as far as I'm aware, they're still posted in the parks, and I believe it is still on the city website as well. So we are still collecting this data and likely will until, did we discuss it, committee the whole, the end of August, I think? So it's still there. If you have missed this, we will be handing out the QR code along the new parade route here in a couple of weeks.
I also just would like to add, I heard that, I'm planning to get it out to the churches. It has not gone yet. I'm meeting, or I've been emailing with Josh Stockton to get updated contact information. I have in my list a combination of emails and websites and some addresses, so we're trying to get a more cohesive, but that should get out by next week, the one to the churches. And just an update on the water bill, because the water bill goes out quarterly to a quarter of the city at a time, administration felt that that would not be a good research, if we're not, if we're not getting it to every single resident, excuse me, then that would give us potentially skewed results. So that's why it's not on the water bill. And I understand we're also going to be getting some, maybe hard stock ones to put at local restaurants and businesses and stuff.
Correct. Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the time involved in this. I got a question about the, is there a, is there a something put in place that doesn't allow someone to take that multiple times? Like if I wanted to, if a resident wanted to take it multiple times?
If someone wanted to sit on their phone or their home computer and submit it, and submit another one, and submit another one? Correct. There's nothing that stops them. And part of the reason we did not turn that functionality off is because there could be multiple people in a household who aren't necessarily providing the same feedback or the same answers. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Mrs. Hoover.
I'm ready for my next slide, please. Thank you. So is Ms. Pedersen gone? So I wanted to share some pictures. I was out of town as well, but Juneteenth was a really big success. Apparently, the food was phenomenal. Again, I was pretty bummed, but just wanted to share that that was a really beautiful community event that happened back on the 13th. I expect it to happen again next year. Next, Ms. Bowlin. Do you want to share about some of the pride events?
I do. So we had, since our last meeting, we've had the Slow Roll and the Book Club, right? Did the Slow Roll happen after our last meeting? Time's not real. The Slow Roll, Mrs. Fransen graciously helped lead that, as she is a bike lady, and I was out of town. The pictures looked wonderful. Queen City Bike helped us out with that, and Queen City Bike will be coming back at the Gem of the Highlands 5K, which we'll be hearing about very soon. But for now, we had Book Club this past weekend. It was wonderful, I felt. Ms. Hoover, you enjoyed yourself?
Yes.
It was great. And then our last pride event for the year is going to be a chalk walk, which will be this upcoming Sunday, so after you go down to the parade and festival on Saturday, come out on Sunday, we will have chalk and chalk paint and flags and streamers and bubbles and all sorts of fun things to sort of chalk messages of love along Lawson Way. And that starts at 10:00 AM on Sunday.
Mrs. Hoover.
One thing I just want to share, I think every event that I attended, someone came up and said, "Thank you." Someone said how much it meant to them, how important it is that we continue to do this in our community. The gentleman who lives next door to me, or well, he owns the four family next to me, is a, was a lifelong resident. He now lives outside of Norwood, but still owns property in Norwood. He'd seen it, he just wanted to see about it. He came, he had an amazing time. He was, and he's not a part of the LGBTQ community. He went to the ciderie and had a cider and was reminiscing that the last time he had been there was when it was a bake, break shop, and he was having a beer with a friend who was doing his breaks. So again, this is for everyone, these events are for everyone, and I'm, there was some pushback about it, and what I have seen has been a flood of support and love, and that has been, for me, the message. Keep pushing forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, a couple of folks have asked me about the community gardens, so I made a couple little things. So there's two community gardens currently in Norwood. One is Williams Avenue Community Garden. They have strawberries and raspberries, they've got a mini tree orchard, they have current open plots, if you would like to go and have a whole plot to yourself, or participate in the plots that are already active. The contact is on there. The other one, the next one, is Emily's Garden at Hunter's Park. This is not Emily Fransen's garden, this is Emily, who was a Norwood resident who died a few years ago, young woman who died of brain cancer. And this has become a magical community space. It's a really beautiful, well-thought-out, well-designed area. They're always looking for support for weeding and watering. Also, just go and check it out. It's really absolutely lovely. The gentleman, Paul, who runs it, said every time he's there, and he's there, I believe, every single day, every time he's there, he runs into someone from some eclectic walk of life. He said it's so, everyone is so different, they come and they bring different perspectives, and that's something that he's been really enjoying about his work, is that connectiveness. So I encourage you, if that's a thing you're into, please check it out. They would love your help. Cooling centers, if you haven't noticed, it's the surface of the sun out there. Unfortunately, the city of Norwood does not have any official cooling centers, as we heard from Trilling Myers and Pastor Mingo. They are creating one, which is fantastic, but until then, until that opens up, please remember that the Public Library in Norwood is considered a cooling center, as well, both ends of Norwood, at Evanston and Pleasant Ridge, they also have rec. centers that are cooling centers. Check on your neighbors, keep your pets inside, stay hydrated, just be really careful. This is really, this is not good weather, and it's really things that we need to start thinking of down the line, is how are we going to take care of our most vulnerable during these heat and cold events, which are only going to be increasing, it seems. And that's all you have.
Mrs. Fransen.
Hi, I have a piece of new business, just.
Oh, we're still unfinished.
I apologize.
But, I mean, we can start it if no one else says.
Oh, I do have unfinished business, too, actually. I'll say this. Yeah, that's right, pivoting. Just a reminder for any community organizations or nonprofits, if you haven't already registered for the Norwood Day Parade, registration ends on June 30th. So if you are a nonprofit, it is free to enter. If you are not, it costs a variable amount of money. Make sure you get in. It's a slightly different route this year due to the beautiful Montgomery Road repaving project. It'll be on Floral, Down Smith, ending on Wall Street, but there'll still be plenty of fun, lots of candy, and hopefully, better weather than this week.
Mrs. Bowlin.
On that same note, Norwood Day Festival is having an area specific for community organizations this year, so if you are involved in a community organization and you want to use a table at the festival, please reach out to them and get a spot set up.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? Moving on to new business. Mrs. Fransen.
Oh, I got some. So November 1st, Gem of the Highlands 5K, it's happening. Again, no runners, walkers in your neighborhood, it could happen here, and it will be. If you are a person that would like to help, help us get the event going, you're welcome to contact myself to be a part of the committee. If you want to volunteer, that's great, too. If you want to walk or run, the registration will be up soon on norwoodrun.com. If you have money, look directly at the camera here, if you have any sponsorships that you want to give us, you're welcome to give us those sponsorships at any time. Thank you.
Mr. Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick comment for the people that are out there working in this, you know, Public Works, contractors, male man, male men, male women, you know, we're thinking of you. And if you have to work in this weather, you know, as a lot of us do, I just, I hope God blesses you with prosperity and success. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowlin.
And as a note on that, all I'm going to do is tag on to other people's ideas tonight. As a person who also works outside and has a big team of people who work outside, it is miserable right now, especially when you can't escape the heat. If you are a person like me, who gets a lot of deliveries, you are an online shopper, consider putting a cooler out with some water or some Gatorades. Electrolytes go a long way right now. If you can afford to share the wealth and have some things on your patio to help people cool off, please do, as well as a little dish of water goes a very long way for a street cat. Not every cat and dog has a home to go inside to. Everyone needs water to survive, so if you can put a little dish of water out, a little cooler with some waters, that would be clutch in this current, current heat wave.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoover.
Next slide. I'm super excited about this. I've been talking about recycling since I've been sitting here, and I'm really excited to share that I am partnering with Carolyn Rothfue from the Board of Health to become a, to create a partnership with Hamilton County Resource for us to be a pilot community, which gives us access to additional funding for recycling stuff. So the first step is we want to get some general sense from people. What are your recycling issues? What are your challenges? Are you currently recycling? Do you want to recycle more? I'm really excited about exploring community composting. Polraine and Wyoming both do it. Polraine gets takes, they divert a ton of food waste a month. A ton of food waste a month, and they are a comparable-sized community. So really excited to look into that. So the first step, please, 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 take the survey, give your thoughts. That will give us some sense about where we need to put our energy and our focus. And next slide, please. Perfect reminder is yard waste season. You can get free yard waste bags from the Board of Health, and Carolyn now has that awesome QR code on there to remind you about, to do the survey. These yard waste bags also are diverted from our waste, so it's really important, if you can put them in the yard waste bags and not in your can, then this is helpful for us. I think that's it for recycling. Oh, we are, our goal is to increase our diversion rate by 4% over two years. So, fingers crossed. And then last one, I wanted to share this again. 988 is a suicide prevention hotline. 988 is a suicide prevention hotline. We have found out that the Trump administration is removing Option 3, which is specifically for LGBTQ community. This is particularly heartbreaking because that community has higher rates of depression and suicide. So please make sure that you connect with people, get them information, they can still call 988, but that is going to be changing soon. And that's all I have under new business. Thank you.
Don't forget your last drive.
Oh, thank you. I will forget, you know I will.
Ms. Bowling.
And on that note, since this is my trend tonight, specific to the LGBTQ community, if you are struggling with suicide, suicidal ideations, depression, any sort of thing relevant to that, you can also visit the Trevor Projects website at any time. They have a chat function on their website, they have a quick exit in case you are concerned about somebody coming into the room and seeing your screen. You also can call or text them, their phone number for text is 678-678, and they are available 24/7, 365 days a year.
Any other new business? All right, then moving on to communications. The first is from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding coworking Cincinnati LLC DBA-fueled collective. Ms. Franzin.
I'd like to make a motion that we receive and file this communication as if read.
With no objections?
With, with no objections, I, yes, I believe so, yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Second.
Seconded by-
With no objections.
Mr. Brayden. Any discussion? Call the floor, please.
Ms. Franzin?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Ms. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is another letter from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding coworking Cincinnati LLC DBA-fueled collective and loft. Ms. Franzin.
I'll do the same thing and make a motion that we receive and file the letter as if read with no objections.
All right, is there a second? Mr. Brayden.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden. Any discussion? Call the floor, please.
Ms. Franzin?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Ms. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving on to the next item, this is a letter from the Norwood Planning Commission regarding the plan, place, plan, unit development overlay zoning district.
To President of Council Joseph S. Gears and members of the Norwood City Council, on June 19th, 2025, the Norwood Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding item number three of the June 19th, 2025 Norwood Planning Commission Agenda III, Mick Oaks, Associate Developer with PLK Communities, requesting the city place a planned unit development overlay zoning district, PUD, on the 0.125 acreage known as 2741 Robertson Avenue, Norwood, Ohio 45212, Hamilton Auditor Book 651, Page 0030, Parcel 019400, located within a neighborhood business zoning district, changing the zoning to NBD PUD. With a vote of three affirmative and two opposed, a motion to endorse the placement of the planned unit development overlay zoning district and recommend to the Norwood City Council on the 0.125 acreage known as 2741 Robertson Avenue, Norwood, Ohio 45212, Hamilton Auditor Book 654, Page 003, Parcel 019700, located within a neighborhood business zoning district. Planning Commission would further ask this memo be placed on the June 24, 2025 meeting of the Norwood City Council in order for Council to set a public hearing no earlier than July 10th, 2025. Based on Sections 1117, period 10, and 1117, period 11, of the Norwood Codified Ordinance, upon receipt of the recommendations of the Planning Commission, the Norwood City Council shall schedule a public hearing be set no earlier than 30 days from receipt of this memorandum.
So just to confirm the date we would be looking at for this public hearing would be August 12th. Ms. Franzin.
And just to clarify, so there's two other memorandums that are related to this PUD overlay, and they would all be on that same date?
They would all be on the same date, yes, and they are, well, as you will note, different, different items and different voting, procedural voting within the commission. Yes. Ms. Franzin.
So as much as I loved hearing Ms. Goins talk through this, it would be great to receive and file the rest of these as if read. Can I make that motion now, or is that something that we need to read out?
I just want to confirm, we don't have to formally read them?
No, you might want to describe the items you are.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
I would be, I would be happy to do that, just to, to save Ms. Goins some, some talking. The other two, this first one was a, a house on Robertson, 2741 Robertson Avenue, that the owner of which wanted to sell to PLK to be a part of this planned unit development. The other two are the proposed townhomes that are south of Robertson Avenue and the parcel known as 4500 Beach Street. This would create a Norwood District of Success PUD, Norwood Neighborhood Business District overlay onto that property. I believe both of those are for the same property that is known as 4500 Beach Street. So the same thing that came in front of Planning Commission last week, I believe, that whole thing would be up for public hearings on August 12th. Just, is that a good overview, do you think, Mr. President?
Yes, so, so the, so the motion for this one is to receive and file this letter and set the public hearing for August 12th.
Awesome. I would like to make a motion to receive and file the letter and set a public hearing for August 12th, 2025.
Thank you. Mr. Brayden.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden. Any discussion? Call the floor, please.
Ms. Franzin?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Ms. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. Moving to the next item, Ms. Franzin, I believe, here you'll want to make the motion to, all right, you go ahead.
Yes. Do I need to, just a point of order, do I need to make two separate motions for each memorandum, or can I do both?
You can make it for, for both.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that for the next two memorandums, we receive and file the letters as if read and set a public hearing for August 12th of 2025.
Motion by Ms. Franzin is to receive and file the next two communications as if read and scheduling those public hearings also for August 12th. Mr. Brayden.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Brayden. Any discussion? Just to confirm, so the, the next, the letter, Communication 4, was the expand planned unit development overlay Robertson South PUD to include 2741 Robertson, and the Communication 5 was the preliminary PUD plan for 4500 Beach Street, the Robertson South PUD. Any discussion? Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Ms. President. Nice job, Ms. Franzin. Nice work.
Right.
Any further discussion? All right, motion on the floor by Ms. Franzin, seconded by Mr. Brayden, is to receive and file the next two communications as if read and scheduling those public hearings for August 12th. Call the floor, please.
Ms. Franzin?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Ms. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. We have no excuse, I'm sorry, no absent members. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I think that we would like to request a debate this session to discuss pending imminent litigation.
I can't hear, speak on this.
Is there a member of council like him? Ms. Hoover.
I'd like to make a motion, we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation.
Motion by Ms. Hoover to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. Is there a second? Ms. Bowling.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Bowling. Call the floor, please.
Ms. Franzin?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Ms. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gerton?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. At this point, council will enter executive session, all of those except for those who are elected officials or members of the administration. We ask that you exit council chambers until the council resumes. Thank you.